All right, I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. Would you please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Davidson is excused. Mayor Zaring.
Present, all right, thank you. We have a quorum. We've got some ceremonial matters this evening to take care of. First up, we're going to do a five-year service award for David Carpenter.
Oh, Joe, Matt's out there.
Come on up too, sir. You can tell us all the good things about him.
How long your schedule is for?
Great, man, five years, hey? Next thing you know, it'll be 20 years from now. We'll be asking ourselves how that goes so fast, yeah? All right. So, yeah, five-year service award. Appreciate it. We appreciate all of our city workers and all the show of beauty for the city. A lot of it goes unheard, as we know, behind the scenes and a lot of times it's thankless. Thank his job, but definitely more than that. We appreciate the five years and so happy, so. Thank you very much, David, yep. I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
You've talked about it here. So David's one of our new supervisors that took over the sewer plant. Often I tell him, hey, we hear that no news is good news a lot from David. That's a very good thing. So, is thankless down there for me? Because I tell him, it's done. He's got a good crew behind him. I mean, I don't think we've had anything that's nothing major. If it is, I get the phone call from the state and say, hey, this happened, we handled it. Nice, thanks. So he's very reliable. Shows up one time, takes care of his crew. I zero complaints about this guy whatsoever. I love working with even idols we have. I hope he's here when I leave, I'll put it that way. Lots more years to come, so congratulations. Thank you, appreciate you.
You gonna hold that for me?
I'll hold it for you.
You don't have to. Um, so, good evening, Board of Aldermen. Tonight I have the pleasure of introducing the new Patrol Lieutenant for the Harrisonville Police Department, which is Brian Kincaid. He started his career with the Harrisonville Police Department in 2010, where he served as a patrol officer, an officer in charge, field training officer, and a firearms instructor. In 2015, he was promoted to Patrol Sergeant, and then in May of '24, he graciously accepted the interim position as the Patrol Lieutenant and quickly after the process was promoted to the permanent position. And tonight, his family is with him, his wife, Katie, his son, Peyton, and his daughter, Paige. And Lieutenant Kincaid is going to be pinned tonight by his son and his daughter.
Come on up. If you don't know Lieutenant Kincaid, then you don't go out to the gym and work out, because it's where I've seen him most, I think, so. Awesome. Back up. Chief, anybody else who wants to get in here? Congratulations.
Hey, group, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry. And Chief, did you want to go ahead and introduce the new police? Or are you going to do that? The new police, look at that, all right.
Do you want me to hold this for you too?
Sure, sure.
All right, I got you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Board. I'd like to introduce our newest member of the Harrisonville Police Department, Officer Preston Kohlers. Officer Kohlers was hired by the city back in January, where he attended and successfully graduated from the Cass County Sheriff's Academy. From there, he was sworn in on June 26th and then attended the Harrisonville Firearms Qualification, where he passed without incident. He is now in his 16-week field training program, and once completed, will begin to serve the citizens of Harrisonville on his own. We welcome Officer Kohlers to the Harrisonville Police Department and are excited to have him as part of our new team.
Welcome aboard. I think last time I talked to you, man, you were still sweating. Get through it, here you are.
We're going to take a little picture.
Oh, yeah. You're going to do that one too, okay?
All right, well.
This is from, if I remember this.
This is from 2023.
2023, we didn't get that, okay. All right, so, yes, next up, we're actually going to do 2023 Officer of the Year presentation. Should have happened last year. Better late than never, right? So, all right.
All right, thanks, sir. All right. Every year, members of the Harrisonville Police Department vote on who we believe went above and beyond the call of duty. Whether it is a law enforcement officer, dispatcher, or our amazing support staff, we recognize one person every year that did just that. For 2023, we voted for Corporal Dylan Bell. Corporal Bell started with HPD in 2020, where he has quickly risen through the ranks of patrol and earned a position as corporal. In 2023, Corporal Bell showed leadership, perseverance, and an unwavering will to serve and protect the Harrisonville community. Corporal Bell comes to work every day with a smile on his face and has been ready to tackle the day no matter what is thrown at him. In 2023, he stepped up in a big way and became a certified field training officer and a certified firearms instructor. Corporal Bell is also an upstanding citizen and member of our community. It's not every day that you have individuals contact you advising you that they have been arrested by Corporal Bell in the past, only to tell me that even though they were arrested, Corporal Bell was professional, polite, and treated that person with kindness. That's the exact kind of officer that we want working for our city, a person that treats everyone fairly, even under extreme circumstances. Thank you, Corporal Bell, for your sacrifice to this profession. You truly make HPD a great place to work, and I'm proud of you and the officer that you've become.
Yes, sir. Well deserved, and I'll tell you, again, when you think about thankless jobs and things like that, that you don't hear about. Officer Bell, we have heard a lot about you here in these board meetings when things come up and all the good things that you're doing, so it is good that you get recognized publicly for this and actually get to hear it from the citizens as well, so. So if I ever get arrested, I'm calling for you, okay?
Before we do, everybody. Chief, can I get you in here? And then Mayor Frank will do here. All right, one, two, three. All right, there we go. We're placing our places. Thank you, guys, congratulations.
All right. Next up, we have public participation. Mr. Scott Gary, saw him earlier, yep, come on up, sir. Tell us your name and address, and then you're going to give them the, okay.
All right, my name's Scott Gary, I live at 615 Younger Drive. Good evening, Mayor and members of the Board of Aldermen. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I had this in here, you made me say it already, but my name's Scott Gary, I live at 615 Younger Drive, and I'm here to discuss the proposed parking amendments for Silver Maple and Younger Streets. First, I wanted to thank Mayor Zaring for communicating with me and providing guidance on involving the community. I want to thank Alderman Turner for taking my call and listening to our concerns. Unfortunately, I didn't receive a response from the Aldermen who represent our ward after leaving messages, but I do appreciate Alderman Dorhoff's input from the last meeting, and I hope they will consider my comments tonight. I also want to thank Alderman Davidson for considering our neighborhood assessment and proposing the amendment. I appreciate him being willing to drive through our neighborhood to get a firsthand look. I happened to see him driving through the neighborhood before the last meeting, and he just happened to follow me to this meeting the last time, so. Anyway, so that, I was able to see him cruise through, so I appreciate that. Additionally, I wanted to thank Daniel Barnett for providing us with the open records request info and for his continued communication via email about the process and the requirements. And I want to also thank Director Hildebrand for her clarifications and communications regarding the specifics of the proposed parking amendments. Some of this, I'm just kind of rehashing a little bit, and I know I provided an email to you all, but when you go around and you canvass and you've reached about 40 residents and whatnot, it's a little hard to go back and explain everything, like 40 different times. So some of this is kind of bundling that up and just making some references, so. I know I got a few minutes, I don't know where the timer is, but I'll try to hurry.
You've got about a minute left, but you spent two minutes thanking everybody, so I'm sure they'll give you another three when we're done here, so.
You just tell me when to stop. While we appreciate these efforts and the proposed amendment solves a lot of residents' issues, including mine, there were still some concerns and confusion about the specifics of the no parking zones. My initial understanding from talking with Director Hildebrand at the last meeting was no parking would be enforced on the south side of Silver Maple and 150 feet northward from Elm Street on both Silver Maple east side and Younger on the west side. It was not clear at that time that the intent was to extend no parking 150 feet from the curve southward until I received the proposed ordinance as amended this morning, which you'll be presented with shortly. Director Hildebrand clarified much of this today in an email, and actually speaking with me before this meeting. In her email I received today, Director Hildebrand clarified that the no parking area will be on the south side of Silver Maple, but will also extend 150 feet on the south side of Silver Maple and the west side of Younger.
Hey, Mr. Gary, I'm going to go ahead and stop you there. I'm going to ask the board, are you guys good, given another three minutes? Got it all, go ahead, we'll give you another three here.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I didn't know my thank yous were going to be two, so. But, rehashing that. While we understand the necessity for this vehicle maneuverability, this adjustment significantly impacts the residents on the corner, particularly those at 612 Younger and 619 Silver Maple. However, I believe a small adjustment, you know, could resolve this issue easily. And Director Hildebrand indicated before this meeting that there is discretion to make those adjustments, so that is definitely good to hear. In my email reply today, which you probably got, it was intended to just loop you all in in case there was more discussion and what was talking about what, because there's a bunch of different things, but. I included that for your reference. I proposed a revision to slightly shorten the distance as indicated in the original aerial depiction of Director Hildebrand's aerial that she had that she shared with me today. I suggested that the extension of the no parking on the Younger side stop at the north edge of the driveway of 612 Younger and in the north side of the driveway of 619 Silver Maple. You should be able to see the minor revision in the email you're copied on this afternoon. The lime green area in the photo I shared, the email shows where the work vehicle, somebody has a company-owned vehicle there, and that's where they park. And so if it extends past there, he's not going to have his work vehicle to be able to be anywhere in front of his home. So, and again, this was before I had a chance to talk with Director Hildebrand for this meeting. But we just asked that you consider, you know, that a small adjustment shortening the no parking zone a little more northward on the straightway toward the curve, just to the north of their driveways before the curve, not into the curve, which would be greatly appreciated. Resident 612 Younger, he canvassed with me, and, you know, he's looking for a little help on that part. I know he very much appreciates people not parking in the grass on the curve, so he's happy about that part. Silver, 619 Silver Maple already has a fire hydrant in their yard, so it already limits some of their options. So some of this would at least give them one space in front. As you can tell, I'm kind of talking about everybody else, because your amendment solved my problem, but, you know, I'm trying to help out the rest of the neighborhood. With all that said, you know, I received a lot of this detail this morning, but, you know, that's where my, the suggestion came out in the process, so. We just kindly asked the board and Director Hildebrand to consider the adjustment to balance safety requirements with the practical need of the residents. Thank you for your time and your continued efforts to improve our community, and we look forward to a resolution that works for everyone involved.
That was perfect timing, thank you.
Oh, good, I hit it?
No, that was perfect.
Sorry, it took six minutes.
No, we thank you, and we appreciate you. Talking with the people out there, that's really, I mean, that's the way our government works in America. The people take responsibility, they say, hey, we understand the need, the city, emergency vehicles, those types of things, and gets involved with that. So I can't thank you guys enough. I wish we had more of that in this city. That would come and present it in a, what would you say, a?
Constructive.
Very constructive and respectful way, and we do appreciate that. I am going to ask real quick, Patty, did you, you talked, you guys talked before, and you know kind of what he's requesting for that, because when it comes time to do the second reading, we're going to have to amend. If everybody's in agreement on that, we'll have to amend that in there. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had that clear before. All right, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, next up, we are going to approval of the minutes for the Board of Aldermen regular meeting, June 17th. Those are in your packet.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Franklin, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those stand as written. Next, we have the Board of Aldermen work session, June 17th.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Milner, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No stand approved. Next, we have the approval of the closed session minutes from June 17th. Those again are in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Fauch, roll call, please.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
I'm staying.
Alderman Chaney.
I'm staying.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
All right, those stand as written. All right, first up on the agenda items tonight, of course, is the second reading, Council Bill Number 34.
Council Bill 34 is an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville establishing streets to have no parking designation. Second reading Council Bill 034.
All right, Patty.
Good evening, I'm Patty Hildebrand with the Public Works Department. The ordinance you have before you is, for second reading, is our no parking ordinance on several streets designated for both safety for our, for buses and our public safety, police, and fire, and also designating those routes that are emergency snow routes to be signed as no parking as well. The previous conversation with Silver Maple and Younger, it's listed under Ward 1, the last location under Ward 1. Right now, we have it identified, the general guidance is normally 150 feet setback from corners, which is what we used. This is a curve, so, I mean, I have a little bit of give there where we can kind of go out and look at where, I mean, if there's a fire hydrant, if there's a bus stop, if there's a driveway, we can make adjustments. So I think rather than putting a specific number of feet that we would shorten it to, if we can say approximately 150 feet for each of those, then that allows me to go out in the field with my staff and make sure that that sits most likely on the north side of those driveways, so that we don't take over both sides as well as our side yards, so I'm happy to do that.
Got you, okay. And still see that our emergency vehicles, I think the main concern was like a fire truck making those turns and getting in there.
If I really have concerns, I have no problem giving our fire chief a call and saying, hey, when you guys are out driving around, could you please go check this corner?
That's true, yeah, see, see if that can work.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
So, I guess, in my time, I went out and spoke with a few citizens over in Thunderbird and Maverick who are going to be affected by this and seeing Mr. Gary's response to the parking there. Nobody I spoke with is in favor of this going on at all. And from what everybody I talked with said that the parking does more to slow down the buses from flying through the neighborhoods as well as anybody else. They said that there's a problem with the buses speeding through their neighborhoods on Maverick. And I guess not speeding, but driving faster than what they should. And nobody represented a, I guess, a need or a want to have any kind of restrictions on those streets, which would be me to move to have Ward 1 language removed from the bill.
Well, I know I did talk to two people up there specifically that they were really indifferent to it. They didn't, they were okay with it and thought it was a good idea, especially for emergency vehicles, those types of things. So I know there's a mixture up in that area of thought process when it comes to that. So I'm glad you got out there to talk to some of those as well. Anything else on that area?
Also had one of your citizens over there on them streets contact me this morning, and they're against it also, said that making all the cars park on the outside part or on the streets that really would affect the trash service, because if any cars parked close to the trash cans, they just drive by, they won't pick them up. But, I mean, ideally, yeah, so trash cans are in the driveway, and there's no parking in front of the driveway. But if the car is right next to the, in the beginning of the driveway and the trash cans there, they'll drive by most of the times.
I would suggest that's probably a conversation we also need to have with our solid waste company to make sure that they're picking up all the trash.
Go ahead, Alderman Milner.
And I get it, I mean, I have family that lives over there, and, I mean, they've got kids that park on the street too, but I think, I think the thing that we have to remember and the reason these whole conversations have started was because of the public safety issue. I mean, I don't think those people who are going to complain about it are thinking, they're not going to feel the same way if an emergency happens at their house or their house catches on fire and the trucks can't get to them. I, I mean, it's an inconvenience, it truly is. We've had this discussion for years since I've been on this board, but I think we have to go back to the reason we started this whole thing, and it's got to be a public safety issue. We've got to be able to get our ambulances and fire trucks down these streets. And, and, you know, it goes back to people being accountable too, because if you've got family members in your house and you've got more cars that fit in your driveway, you have to put some thought into where you're going to park those. You don't park in front of people's houses, you don't park in front of people or in their driveways, but you also don't park in front of their mailboxes. I mean, we have that problem on our street too, and I don't have any problem walking out to people and saying, hey, you scoot your car up, because the mailman won't deliver mail if you park in their driveways. I just, I know it's an inconvenience for a lot of people, but it, I feel like if we take certain sections out and leave certain sections in, it's just going to be, it's going to turn into a real mess.
Also, for that serving, the citizens is our responsibility as representatives of our ward to pursue what serves them best. And if nobody's complaining in that area, and they're all in harmony and everything's well, and if an incident happens, where cars need to be moved, they can be moved. I'm just saying, it's my point that we.
So, and I get that, and I understand that. And I think that's a great point, Alderman Milner, that you make up, that, again, citizens come together, police it up, and know, because this is the way it goes. I mean, we've got to get emergency vehicles out there. That's serving the people, making sure they've got emergency services when they need it. If their house is on fire, fire truck can't get through, and they need to take the time to move, to get somebody to move their car or whatever, it's a whole different story at that point. So, and again, like you said, it's people being respective of other people's property, of other people's, all of, you know, whatever it is. As a government, we got to make sure we're serving the safety of the citizens there, and I know that was one of our priorities we came up with as well at our last Alderman event that we had, to do that. But I believe in giving the citizens the opportunity too to police that up and know that, hey, there is an issue there, can you guys address it and fix it yourselves so that we don't have to come in and put up, you know, no parking signs on one side of the street? I would love it, because then we don't, that's less that we would have to do to make sure that those things happen, so. So again, I would say, if you're wanting to pull, you're wanting to pull the Thunderbird and Maverick out of it, correct?
And if, I mean, if there can be a consensus with Silver Maple, and if he's gone out and gathered the people, which I didn't even bother, because he'd already done the legwork and come up with a list of people and presented it to us, and say, hey, this is our neighborhood, we're not against this.
So you're not saying pull that out altogether, but what was brought and agreed upon that needs to happen, because there is something that needs to happen there on those turns to make sure that they can make it out there, so. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, because.
If it affects, yes, because those curves are kind of tight going around there. That parking in that whole side street, the side houses.
If it's the curve we're talking about, can we do something similar to, Maverick Trail and Thunderbird drive the same as we did Silver Maple and Younger, just the curve, just the inside curve? If that's what we're really saying?
And we, I don't know, as we have enough from the citizens there to know.
Because on the inside curve, there's no houses.
But what you can do too is you could pull the Thunderbird Maverick out. We see how that goes, we can reach out to the people there, and if there's still an issue there and a problem there, then we bring it back and we go with what we got.
Looking under Parking, Chapter 355, 355, I guess, dash, zero, one, zero, Section 2, Subsection B, which restricts parking within 30 feet of intersections. I think that was enforced, that would do a lot to free up a lot of traffic jams got, or traffic issues with people trying to get into and onto other streets. It's a problem on my street that I live in. We've got people that, one house, one residence, that parks on both sides of the corner and blocks it up.
Have you talked to those, to them about that? That's what I'm, I think that's what Alderman Milner was getting at as well. Has those neighbors talked about that, to deal with that? Because I'll tell you, when it becomes manpower for our police department to go out and start writing parking tickets and citing all of that as an issue, and you start taking the time, the money that it takes, and what it takes them away from in this city to do that, that's where you have to take a look at, are we better off doing what we're looking at doing here? Or, I mean, that's, that's really the options there.
But it's already in the code. I'm saying that, you know, if you're driving by, officer was driving by or driving through town and saw a vehicle parked with a, I mean, if he's not in a hurry to get somewhere, it might be something that, you know, takes a look, just to keep it compatible, since it's already in code. in code.
No, and I get that, but if it's already in code, again, I'm going to go back to we have responsibilities where we live at to make sure that we're doing it within the code as well. That's what I'm saying, then the government doesn't have to get involved if, if we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And again, when it comes to the safety, when I'm thinking of my neighbor of, hey, can a fire truck get through there? Can an ambulance get through there to get to somebody's house if they need to? And I've had that conversation with the neighbor across the street from me, because there's, they like to park on the street, and I live in Thunderbird, they like to park on the street, and then when they have a bunch of people over, they like to park on both sides of the street, and it's tough for a car to get through there. And you have to have those conversations that...
Well, and I will tell you, my daughter lives in the curve between Maverick Trail and Thunderbird, and if there are cars parked on, and she lives in the curve, and if there are cars parked on both sides of the street, we have a real hard time even getting our duly pickup through there. So there is no way a fire truck or an ambulance is going to get through there. And, I mean, I just, it just has to go back to where we started this whole conversation. It's not about, we're trying to rule the world here, it's, we're trying to make sure people are safe and that our emergency equipment vehicles can get to where they need to go. And I think that's got to be our biggest concern. Just my, I mean, it is, it's hard. If there's cars parked in that circle back there at the back, that backs up to the CCC, it's real hard to even just get the big trucks through there. So that's my two cents.
Any other input, any other take?
I'd still like to move forward with the motion.
So what is your motion exactly?
To have, to remove or amend the language restricted from the bill regarding Ward One.
So you're talking all of it, even what's already been agreed upon in the other?
Well, if, if that can be, is consensual, then absolutely go forward with that, because like I said, that is a tight curve back there, avenue back there, that's agreed to, leave that. All of what's been amended.
So basically what you're saying is you would take out the Thunderbird Maverick part of it for now and say, and move forward with what we got on the rest of them then? Alderman Fauch?
Well, I just wanted to ask, you know, we, people have a lot more vehicles nowadays. They have a lot bigger vehicles and they, it's not, they're not just vehicles, they're trailers and everything else. So that's part of what's created this problem. But I just wanted to ask if the people that are parking on the street on a regular basis, are they not able to park on their driveway or they just don't want to park on their driveway because they might have to back their car out to let somebody else out?
From what I gather, there's a couple large families back there. Some of them have six kids, some have four kids, and they've kind of, some of them hit the driving age all at the same time. So as their kids are aging, their cars are, the numbers of vehicles that they have are diminishing, but it's mainly, you know, just regular families. Some larger families and others, maybe larger than the family you have or I have, but they're all, you know, and then part of it was they're on sports, sports teams, so they have buddies, friends, whatever, coming over, interacting with them. What are you supposed to do? What do you do when you have graduations? There's no parking. You forced, you forced everybody to park on one side, you congested one side of the street with everybody's vehicles that are going to park in the street.
And what would you do if an ambulance had to get through and couldn't?
I can hear you.
What would you do if a fire truck had to get through and couldn't get through? I mean, you know, I'm sort of going back to Marcy's point.
If you drive down the streets, Maverick and Thunderbird are wide enough for cars to park on either side, and I don't know about the curve, I've never seen, but I'm pretty sure I could drive a bus through that curve.
Cars on both sides? I don't know, it'd be pretty tight, in one side or the other, but I think parking both sides is going to be pretty tough to get a bus and a fire truck through there if they're parked on both sides of the street.
I believe I talked to one of the gentlemen on the curve, this gentleman here, and usually there's not a lot of parking around the curve there. This gentleman here.
No. I have...
Sir, I'm sorry, we need to get your name and address, please, so we have it in the minutes if you're going to...
I'm not on the track.
Yeah, because, but go ahead and say what you were saying, finish what you were saying.
I was saying, the information I received, there's not a lot of cars parking on that curve, on the inside of the curve, on the outer curve where the houses are, there are cars parked over there. So I've got letters from people who are living in it, Mr. Holden Parks, the people who live over there, asking us not to move forward with restricting the parking in that area. And I don't have one letter from anybody saying, yes, this is a good idea.
Okay. Well, I've talked to somebody up there too, so that wasn't against it and thought it would be an okay idea as well, but, so I think what you're saying is, is your motion is to strike the Thunderbird Maverick out of the original, the bill? Okay?
I would be satisfied with that.
Striking that out of the bill?
They've already amended in the last meeting, Yager and Silver Maple.
Okay. Okay, so you're making a motion to take out Thunderbird and Maverick?
As I understand it, the motion is to remove under Ward One, restricting parking on the north side of Maverick Trail and restricting parking on the south side of Thunderbird Drive, and that would be the motion to remove, if I have that correct. And then the next would be there needs to be a second to that motion, and then you'd have to have a vote whether or not to, whether or not that motion passes.
And then do we need to motion in the changes that you...
No, that's, that's part of the rest of the bill.
Part, so that is already there?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we would just need a second on that?
I think we need to amend it to say approximately for...
Well, his motion is just to remove those two streets.
Let's deal, we've got one on the table now, so let's do one first. So there's a motion made, and there needs to be, if it's going to go forward, there needs to be a second by another Alderman.
Will this be brought up later for discussion?
Well, it could. If you guys strike it now, it can be brought up later if that's what you want to move forward with and we decide there's still a problem up there. Go ahead, sir.
I'm just saying it'd be a whole new ordinance coming back, brought it back.
Yeah, it would be under a whole different ordinance.
My issue with this is not Thunderbird or Maverick Trail, it's that the streets in my ward, you know, I could pull those out too because some people don't like it. So, but it's a snow route, so I'm going to be in favor of it. So I'm not crazy about making exceptions, you know, one-off, one-off exceptions.
There still needs to be a second. If there's no second, then the motion fails and we would go back to voting on the original motion.
Then that would be the original motion with whatever.
Was what we started with, yes.
Correct.
Yep.
As written.
So is there a second motion to pull Thunderbird and Maverick Trail out of this ordinance for now?
Okay.
You second, I got a second from Alderman Turner, so let's do a roll call, please.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Nay. Nay, I'm sorry.
Alderman Mills.
Nay.
Alderman Fauch.
Nay.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Nay.
Alderman Milner.
Nay.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Okay, so that motion will fail?
Fails.
And we'll move forward with the, yep, second reading of Council Bill 34, which you already read.
Yeah, we already had second reading, so we just need to roll call now.
I think that was already amended in there, right?
Just need to confirm that the approximate has been amended into, it has not, so we do need to vote on a motion.
Make a, make a motion to amend that to approximately 150 feet.
All right, Alderman Dorhoff has made a motion for 150.
Second.
Got a second from Alderman Turner. We'll do a roll call on that, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
No.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Okay, so Council Bill Number 34 is now ordinance...
We need to...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's not. Council Bill 34 as amended is an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisville establishing streets to have no parking designation, second to Council Bill 034 as amended. Now you can enter a roll call vote.
There we go, roll call vote.
Yep.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Nay.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Okay, now Council Bill Number 34 is ordinance 3696. And thank you, everybody, for your work on that. I know it's not always easy, we appreciate everybody's honesty, we appreciate everybody's involvement on that, so thanks again. All right, next up, I am going to open a public hearing for special use permit for an event venue at 301 North Commercial Street that is open now, and Christina, I think you're going to talk on that?
So yes, the applicant is seeking approval of a special use permit to operate an event venue at 301 North Commercial Street. The property is currently zoned, service business, C2 District, which is the proposed, so the proposed use of the event venue isn't allowed use within the district with an approved special use permit. This is an appropriate location for this district and this location. There are no additional requirements related to the special use, as some special uses do have additional items, this one doesn't have anything specific to it. The site is situated such that the internal circulation is proposed to flow one way with the southern point of access being the entry and the northern point of access being the exit. Staff has recommended that the applicant obtain an access easement from Oakland Cemetery and share that access point to eliminate one of the proposed curb cuts onto Commercial Street. They have been in conversations. I did receive an email earlier today from the applicant that he forwarded me from Ms. Young with Oakland Cemetery Association, saying that they were confirming discussions that they had after their June 26th meeting regarding the request to have a joint curb cut on North Commercial Street at the existing interest and to the east section of the cemetery. The joint entry would provide one lane to the cemetery of equal or greater width at its current location and two lanes onto the property as one, as that one being basically the exit point for his event center. And said that the board approved the request as outlined above with the understanding that specific details of the agreement are to be contained in a written document to be prepared by legal counsel and consent signed by the applicant and the designated representative from the board prior to construction. So I said, that was just received earlier today. So those conversations have moved forward, which is positive. Let me see. Additionally, items such as landscaping, lighting will require further detail before we make it to a final approval of the final development plan. This, of course, being the special use, mostly focused on getting approval for the use. Conditions of approval are included related to those items. Proposed building is shown as utilizing metal panels. Staff has asked for specification sheets, and we've kind of been back and forth on some of that material there. We did inform the applicant previously, and this was discussed also at plan zoning, that the use of metal siding is permitted only in industrial districts and only for side and rear facades, that's Section 405-565D6, which was one of the code amendments from the last year. Staff is supportive of a modification to this requirement considering that this is a newer requirement and the applicant's initial pre-op meeting was before this requirement was in place, and the applicant is trying to create kind of a barn-style look. We kind of understand his concept. We are not supportive of 100% metal though, so we had some conversation on that as well. We've also noted that any corrugated metal facades have to be complemented with masonry or brick, stone, or some other stucco, split face. Architectural metal panels are listed as a suitable material. Again, that's mostly looking at industrial, but we're trying to be a little bit flexible here, given the situation. The applicant had requested previously a modification to the foreside architecture requirement for 405-565C4, but we've since had some conversations, and there's a door that is currently shown to be located near the northeast corner of the building that is planned to be moved to the south elevation, so that there'll be breakup in that elevation in some form or fashion, similar to what is seen on the other elevations. The applicant also had sent an email earlier today with some other stone wainscoting as a possible alternative for the southern portion, so that we're not seeing 100% metal. And that would be supportive, I think, from our standpoint, it'd be a much nicer product. The city's 2040 conference of plan shows this area as preservation rule and recreation open space, which are place types that are not expected to substantially develop. These areas may include environmentally sensitive areas such as floodways and wetlands, and you will have noticed that there is a lot of floodlands area in the back part of this property. Recreation open spaces types are, you typically would expect to see parks and trails and stuff back there, and I think even the comp plan shows a trail coming back through some portion here close to this area. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item on their June 20th meeting and voted to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen of the special use permit with all aspects being subject to the site plan review process and the building permit process and the conditions that were listed in staff's report. And so staff has recommended approval of the proposed special use permit for an event venue with the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain a floodplain development permit and elevation certificate. The applicant shall obtain an access easement from Oakland Cemetery to utilize their existing curb cut for the northern access point, and again, eliminating one of those potential curb cuts. An exterior building and site plan, site lighting shall comply with requirements specified in Section 405-565G of the city's municipal code. The site shall meet or exceed all applicable landscaping and screening requirements contained within Section 405-565F of the city's municipal code, and I will point out the conversations we had related to that, and I think some of the staff report talks about the amount of landscaping that's currently on the site or the existing trees and shrubs, and the fact that they may meet that very easily with what's already there, what's maybe retained within the repairing buffer as well, so they may not have to add a whole lot there, and so staff's going to work with them as well. And as you will note in the staff reports, green and red to see the difference between what we had at planning and zoning, as well, some of the stuff I mentioned a minute ago, we're asking, we're saying modification granted to the four-sided architecture requirement has been changed. May not have changed that on my report there. So we're looking for now a modification to the 405-565D6 to allow for a portion of the proposed building to be metal siding. The metal siding shall be complemented with another material allowed, allowed material as listed in 405-565D9, which would be the masonry, brick, stone, stucco type of materials. And the special use be granted for a period of 20 years from the date of approval. If the applicant wishes to transfer ownership to a second party, the applicant must resubmit the application for special use permit to the city prior to transfer of ownership. That concludes staff's presentation. You have questions?
Yeah, thank you very much for that there. This is a public hearing, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, oh, go ahead, sir, come on up, give us your name and your address. I thought I recognized you, but I couldn't quite see you back there, so.
Jesse Brownsberger, 301 North Commercial Street. I'm the one proposing the building. Just wanted to come up here and, I mean, she pretty much covered what my plan is to do, so I really would just kind of come up here and see if you guys had any questions that I could answer.
All right, question, Alderman Milner? All right, question, Alderman Milner?
I guess my only question is how, I mean, what is your max capacity you're thinking?
Uh, ninety-nine.
So you only have thirty-six parking spaces?
Correct.
Think that's going to work?
I think it'd be enough, yeah, with, with it. I mean, per, when you look up, I mean, it's so hard to find, you know, the exact thing.
It states like, oh, you know, for a wedding, then you got to have this. Right.
Depending where you look, I find, you know, you have one car per, you know, three people at a wedding, which we would meet if they were full. But the codes that we are, in the ICB, you, we only have to have, I think, the city code, I think, is twenty-four. I don't remember what it said, and then like the ICB's twenty-six is what they require per the amount of how the code reads with that. So, and with that, if I, my plan was to, you know, if I, I was going to have like a little bus for people, you know. They get married, they want to go downtown, and I'll have a driver for them, you know. If for some reason, I know there's hotels, if we could pick them up from there, if they, for some reason needed more parking, that's, that's another option I was going to have with, with my, I, business idea.
Any other questions? Alderman Fauch.
Are we, do we look at the traffic? I mean, that's a pretty busy street there to put another cut, and, you know, if you've got a bunch of people entering and leaving at a certain time. I mean, I'm sure there's no opportunity for a rear entrance.
Mm-mm. Not with the creek back there. That's why I was trying to make it one-way, so that would really help with the traffic, so that people are coming in there in that one and then leaving in a different, so it's not just constant same place.
Any other questions from the board? No, all right. No, yep, yep. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Nobody else from the public want to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on that, and thank you, Christina, for your work on that as well. And we are going to move on to the first reading, Council Bill number thirty-five.
Council Bill thirty-five is an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen. The City of Harrisville approving a special use permit for this use of an event venue on property located at four-oh-one North Commercial Streets in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri. First year of Council Bill zero-three-five.
All right, thank you, sir. And that will come back on the July fifteenth for the second reading for that. All right. Next up, we have another public hearing. I'm going to open a public hearing on code amendments, obstructions, and encroachments. That is open now. Christina, you're back up.
Good evening again. This one's, uh, my amendments are getting a little bit shorter. I hope they stay that way. Much more targeted and not as wide. So we're proposing the following amendments. We're repealing current sections five-fifteen, zero-three-zero, and zero-four-zero in their entirety and replacing section five-fifteen, zero-three-zero with the proposed language, which effectively allows for encroachments or instruct, obstructions into a public right-of-way with written approval of the Public Works Director and an approved and executed encroachment agreement. Changes that provide clarification are also included having to do with CBD-one and CBD-two. The way they were worded previously, very confusing, and this just cleans that up and points back to this regulation, so that it's clear that this is the correct process to follow, and there's not additional processes that need to be done. So the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this on their June twentieth meeting and recommended approval of the proposed code amendments as recommended by staff, and we are still recommending approval of the amendments as presented tonight. Please let me know if you have any questions. Patty and I both worked on this, so we're happy to answer anything, and I believe Steve was helping us out some, too.
Man, she's bringing everybody in on this one, so, that's awesome. And actually, I'm going to ask this, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this right now? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close that hearing, and then see if, does the board have any questions, concerns? All right.
Council Bill thirty-six is an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen, City of Harrisville, Missouri, amend chapter five-one-five, streets, sidewalks, and other public places under Title V, Building and Construction, and chapter four-oh-five, zoning regulations under Title IV, land use of the Harrisonville Municipal Code, and establish an effective date. First year of Council Bill zero-three-six.
All right, and we'll bring that one back for a second reading on July fifteenth meeting as well. Thank you all for your work on that. All right, final up, another public hearing, public hearing on vacation of fifteen-feet-wide alley located north of North Street. I'm going to open that public hearing now, and Christina, I think you're back up.
Okay, well, this one's a little bit different. We don't have vacation of right-of-way very often. So it takes a little while to go through, plus they have a thirty-day notice requirement. So the applicant is seeking approval of a request to vacate a fifteen-foot-wide, unimproved alley right-of-way that runs north and south between lots one-fifty-five and one-sixty, original town of Harrisonville, which was recorded in eighteen-eighty. The fifteen-foot-wide alley was dedicated, as I just said, as part of that eighteen-eighty plat. The alley was never constructed and has shrubs and trees growing in a hundred or more feet of the, of back part of it in that right-of-way. Staff has received two objections, and those are attached within the packet, from Ms. Stone and Mr. Coughfelt. The basis of the objections are that vacating this right-of-way would remove their only remaining legal access for the respective properties. Both parcels, though, as I've included in the map, are entirely within the flood, within the floodplain, sorry, and unbuildable. Section five-fifteen, zero-two-zero states, "But if opposition shall be made by any person owning property abutting on such street, alley, commons, or public square, such application shall continue on file for a further period of thirty days from the hearing thereon. If either the objector shall consent to such vacation or if upon such hearing the Board of Aldermen deems it advisable to overrule such objection, the Board of Aldermen may grant the prayer of the petition." This application was noticed to be heard on this date, but given the aforementioned section of code, no final action can be taken on this item until the next meeting to make sure we've had the full thirty days from, from that time period. Staff is recommending approval when we come back around to the, again, going back to the fact that the lots that are objecting are unbuildable because they're in a floodplain, the only thing could actually probably be used for would be open recreational type of use. Though we are still happy to have conversations and try to work through if there's anything else brought to our attention.
Okay, all right, thank you. It's, it's a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Come on up and give us your name and address.
My name is Justin Azin. I live at two-eleven sixteen South Ham, here in Harrisonville.
Come on up to the mic if you would, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Madrono, and I live at, live at fifteen-eleven Southwest Twin Creek Place in Blue Springs, Missouri.
So Julie's a real estate agent, is selling the property. I am buying this through H&amp;J Home Builders. He can't be here tonight, so I'm representing him, but it would be for my personal house. And it's two lots that are divided by the city's eighteen-eighty right-of-way. It obviously hasn't been used since eighteen-eighty, hasn't been developed. The two lots that I think, that I believe that are abstain, or saying no to this are north of a creek there that runs out of the two lakes. The two city lakes, I can't remember, is it, I want to say North Lake, but I was.
Yeah, no, I know where you're talking.
So the two city lakes, as they dump out, this is the drainage creek that runs along there and then over towards Commercial. Their property is on the north side of that creek. The easement that we're talking about is on the south side of that, and it is up on a, like an elevated lot. It's probably twenty feet down, a really steep embankment through a lot of big trees to the creek down there. There is then another ten feet deep and twenty feet wide. They don't have, as far as I can tell, there's no way they can legally go to their property through that anyway, you know, unless you're. A four-wheeler can't do it or anything like that.
Gotcha.
It's not really usable from that side, from the lot that we're talking about, and Julie has a lot of information.
Yes, go ahead.
I do, and I have packets for you guys to see. I kind of went back and hiked as much as I could back there, but with the big ravine and such and the overgrown trees, it was really hard to get definite, but this is all approximate. So I have photos. Are you guys comfortable if I hand them out to you?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yep.
And I believe there's one for each of them in there, and that first page, that's just the survey that we had done just to follow protocol through your state laws and how you guys go about this. So we hired a survey team to come in and just do a, a survey about where the lot is and how the right-of-way is running. And then with that, I just kind of followed up how the land looks from your GIS system, from your Cass County GIS system. And what I wanted to nice to see is what it looked like from your computer and then what it looks like in real time. So there's photos of each of those. There's also an alternate route. So it is also treed, and it looks very similar to the same path that you would be taking on the right-of-way that we're asking you to move. It, it actually has a little bit more pathy areas and not quite as sloped as hard as the lot that we have and that's kind of the subject area. But you can see the back, it's woods, it's creek, there's a lot of buildup of trees and woods. But the most important part is there is a ten-foot ravine that takes you down to the creek. It's not a sloped ravine, it is just a drop-off. And then the creek itself, itself is about twenty feet wide, and then another ravine on the other side with woods and everything that comes with woods. So, yeah, so we're just asking, he would like to build a single-family residence. It's a beautiful piece of land. I mean, it's just absolutely gorgeous. And so it would just help the community, would be a tax payer helping the community. There's also another route for one of the lots. That's through Lord's Park. You can see the alternate routes that I have in the handout. So that way, if they think that they can't actually access their land, there is another way. I will tell you, the terrain is very similar to like the right-of-way that we're asking for to be removed, but it's an option. So we're not trying to leave the community without an option, but, yeah, we just want to make.
Trying to cut anybody off from the land.
No.
The right-of-way that is in, proposed here is not usable to their property anyway.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Elevation changes and creek.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but we just want to make sure you know that we're not saying there's no options, because there actually is a few options for them, and we're happy to, you know, show them or hand them the handout also, however. But you can see it off of your GIS system as well. You can kind of follow the, the other right-of-way and see that it's probably a better path than.
There still is access, yeah.
Did you guys have any other questions?
Any questions from the board? Yep, Alderman Fauch.
Have you already purchased the property, or is it contingent?
It's a contingent, upon the right-of-way being removed.
Because it, the right-of-way is in the middle of the lot. There are two lots. They seem, it seems fairly large, but when you take into consideration the slope and the trees, and there is a city sewer running through the back of the property or the back of the lot that I have to stay, the immobility, you have to stay fifteen feet away from. When you take into those, those into consideration, the only place you can build a house is right in the middle of the unit, basically, which is right down the middle of those two lots.
That's why I'm kind of, kind of confused, why the, the two opposition letters to it?
We, we were surprised as well, because we did the preliminary meetings with the Public Works Department, with Christina. We just followed all the protocols, and it didn't look like there was going to be any issues. So we were shocked as well, because when we found out there was opposition, we, we really didn't know why, and so.
Again, it's on the north side of the creek or, or the other two properties, and it's just not physically accessible.
Right, that's why I was confused, why they would oppose it.
Yeah, so I just.
They do it, but up to the, the adjoining land, but it's not something.
But it's, it's not really land. It's creek. Any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions?
So you're, you would own one-sixty and one-fifty-five, is that what you're saying?
Not all of one-fifty-five. So one-fifty-five is actually split. And you can kind of see that a little easier on your GIS, but it would be a portion of one-fifty-five.
So neither lot on their own are really usable, because again, there is that fifteen-foot right-of-way right down the middle, and then in the back of it is a fifteen-foot easement you have to give for the sewer line is back there.
But together, they're very usable, and it's beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Perfect. Well, we appreciate. Any other questions or concerns from anybody? Anybody else from the public want to speak on that? Thank you all very much. I'm going to close the public hearing on that, and as Christina was explaining there, the first reading will come back on July fifteenth at our next meeting, so that we can give that full thirty days to let it run its course there. All right, thank you all for all the work on that. Christina, you had a lot this week. Thank you. Uh, next up, we've got Aldermen and committee reports. Let's start with Alderman Chaney.
Uh, I really have nothing to look forward to Fourth of July, celebrating independence, our great democracy, and hoping that the spirit of seventy-six endures and lives on in all of us.
There you go, yeah. Thank you, sir. Alderman Franklin?
Yes, like with Kyle, I would urge everybody to go out to the city park and enjoy the Fourth of July celebrations. We have a lot going on out there, and of course, the fireworks display is always excellent, so. I also wanted to bring up the Ville. I mentioned last meeting that we had done a fundraiser for HAS friends, and the fundraiser is over. I don't have all the figures in yet, but I did want to give a shout out to Ryan and Alexis at the Ville for sponsoring the fundraiser for the month of June and helping us to raise some money for some much-needed picnic tables and benches and chairs for out at the shelter. So appreciate them doing that, and I appreciate all of the businesses in town, small or otherwise, that sit there and donate items or money or time spent helping with the nonprofit organizations, especially with HAS and with our shelter. I think it's, I think it brings our community a lot closer together, and it's nice to know that that help is out there, so. The other night during the storm, we lost our electricity. It was very brief, and it came back on, no issues after that. And then the next morning, Dale and I were having coffee on the porch, and it's early, and our neighbor's tree, the limb, just came flying out of it, out from nowhere. And the city, uh, street department, they came through, wasn't twenty minutes later with their truck and chopped it up and got it in the back of the truck and cleaned everything up and, and where they went. So appreciate them being on the lookout and looking for limbs and broken, because I know with the winds and everything, there's a lot of limbs that do fall and don't always fall in great places. So it's nice to see them out and about and helping the community. Another thing, Artisans Corner, on July twelfth and thirteenth, they are going to have their five-year celebration. They, it's hard to believe they've been in business for five years, and they're going to have a lot going on. So if you have a chance, stop off and say hi to them and, and help them celebrate their five years. And, um, one thing, anyway, no, that's all for now.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Alderman Mills?
Yeah, I hope everyone has a safe fourth, and, and, yeah, lots of wind and rain. And then, and then a question, I don't know, maybe this is a jury question. So today, new rules went into effect by the Department of Labor. Is the government, is the city affected by any of those salary rules? Or portions of the city?
We've already. Yeah, we've already been.
And, and this is mild, but January one, it's big time. It has been rescinded twice over the years because it was proposed in two other federal administrations, but this one didn't get rescinded. And if January doesn't get rescinded, it'll be a budget impact.
Yes.
Okay, as long as you know.
We're watching it.
Okay.
That's it? You sure?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Alderman Turner?
Uh, just, everyone have a safe fourth, be safe, don't get hurt, and enjoy.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Fauch?
Uh, I just want to pass my condolences to the family of Jim Thompson. He passed away today. He was a city attorney here for many, many years, and I think he was eighty-four, I think, when he passed away today, so that's all.
Oh, thank you for that, sir. Appreciate it. Alderman Dorhoff?
Uh, I just want to congratulate Lieutenant Kincaid again.
I just want to congratulate Lieutenant Kincaid again and our newest officer. It's great to see the police department thriving and getting some great people in that department. And everybody have a great Fourth of July.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Milner?
I think we all feel the same way about the Fourth. Hopefully, everybody celebrates. Mr. Brownsberger, it's exciting to have you want to come to us and put in a new business. We love you, small, bringing small community businesses back in, so congratulations on that. Everybody just have a great week.
Awesome, thank you, ma'am. It is the administrative report.
Yes, sir. Groundbreaking for the silhouette art at the Burn District Monument will be July 11th at 10:00 a.m. Whataburger ribbon cutting will be July 11th at 5:00 p.m. Coffee with the Cop, July 15th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at Lexington on the square. And then Harrisville Alliance Meeting will be July 17th, 6:00 p.m. at the Cass Regional Medical Center and their conference room. The airport project continues to move along. The south area sanitary sewer project is hopefully coming to closer completion. We have executed some parts of the contract to motivate the contractor to get that project completed. The water treatment plant, clarifier dome cover project, we have agreed to the amount in the contract terms. So we're working to get the contract completed on that. Curb and gutter annual program, I had four bids on that and was awarded to Terry Snelling Construction. Had eight bids for the asphalt mill and overlay project. So staff is in the review period of those projects or those submittals. Royal Street Extension Project, the two firms submitted on the 28th. Had our first technical meeting to discuss the submittals and the scoring and the several that are involved with the scoring. And hopefully by the, around the 10th of July, we'll be completing that project with the announcement of the winner of that contract. And then you'll hear a lot more from Ted on stormwater later. First Annual Bicycle Rodeo is being hosted by the Harrisville Police Department on the 26th at 9:00 at North Park. And chief of police selection, we will be having the three final candidates here on the 23rd and 24th and 25th of this month. Various organizations and people involved with the panel to give input. So I will be sending out to you all opportunity to come and sit in on some of that as well. And then we had the retirement of Detective Katrin. He's retiring on the Fourth, and he's going out with a bang. And so we thank him for all his years of service and all that he's contributed to the City of Harrisville. The, Andrew Thompson has completed his servant leadership project, which was the new dock out at Camp Reeder. If you haven't seen that, it's really nice how the finished product is on that. G7 Construction has replaced a section of sidewalk at the Aquatic Center parking lot. And they've also completed the Shelter Two concrete as well. We're at the point of the contract with GFL that we're into the one-year renewal period. If the board is not wanting to do that, please let me know over the next couple of weeks, so we can deal with that appropriately. And also, as you remember, the marijuana statute that went out, and the only time to put on a ballot to not have a dispensary is at presidential elections. So this is that time, so if you are still interested in that, then please let me know. Of course, doing that, and if it was approved by the voters, then also the sales tax and all that would go away as well. But the, I told you all when it came around, I would, I would remind you, and if you want to do that, then please let me know, because that would have to be turned in by August to go on the November ballot. The only next opportunity is of '28, so. With that, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I was going to ask you, what is a servant leadership project? You've probably explained that before, but.
I like Grant.
Grant, what we got there?
Very similar to an Eagle Scout project, just a different organization.
What organization is that through? Do you know?
I would have to look at my notes.
Okay, all right. Now just, I'll get with you offline on that, I thought I'd ask about that. Did the media leave us?
Yes.
Oh, I guess they don't have any questions then, all right. Well, we entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion from Alderman Milner, a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Take about 10 minutes, and we'll reconvene for work session. Thank you, everybody, thank you, everybody.
What's it tell you when the media leaves?
I know.